Good evening. I call to order the zoning board appeals meeting on Thursday, October 16th at Lakeville Public Library. Our first agenda item is the continuation of the Patel hearing in the 90 Main Street. I believe the last time we saw you, sir, you want to come on up?
Who is he?
We needed to get stamped plans. I think we have stamped plans.
We have stamped plans.
So Jeff, why don't you tell us if we have what we need now?
You have what you need. This is exactly what I wanted.
And nothing else has changed from your allocation since last time, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yep.
So with that, encourage the guy that I break if he wants. He's so inclined to make a motion since he has what he wants now.
I make the motion. We approve the special permit.
All right, second.
Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Kathy, would you tell us who Patel was next?
So we have two weeks to do the paperwork. After that, it goes to the town clerk where it stays for 20 days so that if, in case there's appeals, if there's no appeals, I will contact you to come pick it up.
Okay. And then why would it go to the building department?
So then you would go to the registry of deeds. You record that decision and then you bring your receipt to the building department.
Okay.
And they'll give you a permit and you'll be good to go.
Thanks.
You're welcome. Have a good evening. Okay. Next agenda item. Make sure I do these in the right order here. Yes, okay. So Lakeville zoning board appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, October 16th, 7:00 PM, Lakeville Public Library, Port Precinct Street, petition of Derek Maxey. Special permit is requested under section 270-4.1 and section 270-7.438 to allow construction of single-family dwelling located in the business zone. Property size is 34 Reservoir Avenue. Documents were available to be viewed at the planning department. Good evening, Mr. Maxey.
Good evening, folks. How we doing?
Hang on one second.
Yeah.
What address did you just read? 31 Reservoir. 31 Reservoir. All right, let's start again. Good evening, Mr. Maxey. How are you?
Good evening, Derek Maxey, 55 Long Point Road, Lakeville.
So why don't you tell us what you're going to do, then I'll read some stuff into the record and we'll go from there.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman, can I just pass out a copy of the plans so everybody has them?
Absolutely.
I think you may already have, but it's the two lots, lot one and lot two.
I got it. Yeah, we do have it, but.
Yeah, just in case I go.
Kill some more trees, Derek.
You don't want to let me cycle all the way down.
All right, so I'll wait for you.
You're good.
Yeah, so basically, the Lakeville Country Club, all the property there is its own business. And as you know, everywhere around me is pretty much residential and all the, on the other side of Reservoir Avenue is all residential. So instead of trying to do some business on that road, it's a dead end road, I think everybody would rather see it residential. So I, I think that's the right way to go. So I'm planning to put two houses there at some point, but this is the first step.
Okay. Plain and simple. So.
Planning with your approval, I should say.
Can't do much without us, can you?
Right.
Okay, so I do have a letter to read into the record from the Lakeville Planning Board, dated October 6th, at the Thursday, September 25th, meeting the planning board reviewed the above referenced petitions for hearing for the zoning board appeals. Board supports the petition to allow a residential dwelling in the business zone. Other than that, as the petitioner pointed out, the only reason he is before us is because it's his own business and without us issuing a special permit, they cannot construct anything residential. So do we have any questions or? Did you go see Nancy already?
Concom?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. And we're actually well over 100 feet from the reservoirs out of there. So we're actually 200 feet away.
Yeah. Well, the other question I have is, it's in the Lane Fairway, the Lane Fairway is right there, or the 18th Fairway?
The 18th Fairway, yes. Yeah, the lot one, the house will be right up near the street and lot two will actually be kind of around the corner where it says parcel A.
Because I have a tendency when I played there, to slice it a little bit and it ended up where the houses are.
Me too. And we plan to shorten up that, that fairway anyways for that reason, because right now they're hitting the houses that are prior to that. So we've already shortened it up, so that would be prohibited from happening.
So you're going to redesign that to avoid?
Which we've already started doing that, yes.
So, real quick, so I go down there with my bikes, the girls, all the time.
Yeah.
And we turn around at your gate, right?
Yeah.
So you're saying this lot two is going to be how far to that gate? And then how far into the 18th hole will that go?
Yeah, so lot two, the house will go basically, I'm assuming, probably where parcel A is. The gate will actually be, it'll still be there, but it will only be for that house. There's, the gate's not going to be, I know that's a big concern, will traffic come that way? Absolutely not. Because this property is going to be actually taking away the access for there.
Okay. And then for the usage going forward, you said you're shortening the hole, the golf course behind that?
Modifying, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So will they still be going through that particular, playing in that area where it's?
Yeah, I don't plan on selling the houses, so we're going to let, it's, they're going to keep, I'm probably just going to rent them out. I want to keep the houses because it does sound like a course, so I can keep access to that land down below.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Any additional questions? Not yet. I don't have any questions. Chris's?
No. I have a question that's really not pertinent, so it's more of just a curiosity.
It's curiosity.
How do you handle the grade change? It's quite a drop off.
So if you were to go to the site, lot one, right now I have the house pretty much staked out where it's going to go, it's going to be 40 feet off the street. And that's staked out and it's going to have, basically, they're both going to have a lot, that one's going to have a lot to sell, the other one will not, because that's pretty much level ground over there.
Yeah.
Anyone in the audience have any questions or want to make any comments? Come on up to the podium, sir, and tell us your name and address and.
Sure. This may not be the most appropriate question, but anyhow.
Can you tell us your name?
Sure. Tom Varekioni. I own 16 Reservoir Avenue together with my wife, and I own 13 Reservoir Avenue outright. So my question is really how this designation of these two housing lots will tie into any future development of the senior housing? Because it seems like the 18th hole is really going to be non-functional, you know, with any houses built on these two lots.
Do you legally answer that question?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, so there's a proposal that went Tuesday to the select board and the planning board, and the proposal is to build senior housing, quite a few of, I think it's 424, that's their proposal. But in this case, they're going to convert it down to, it's going to be a nine-hole golf course and not 18. So they're just going to pick the holes that'll work, fire it. So exactly which ones are going to be?
It's probably going to be gone.
It could be gone, right.
So do you have a plan for the remainder of the 18th Fairway that's not affected by 31 and 33 Reservoir?
Not at this, not at this point. There is a, there should be a public record one at the town because they just met with them Tuesday, but I do not have a plan with them.
Right, okay. And the lots seem to extend into the small ponds that are on the course there. Are there any concerns from the conservation commission or with regard to the water quality there?
You're right. So the question is, is it going to affect the ponds at all?
Right.
And the, obviously Concom would not let that happen, and, and we are going to be 200 feet away, and any gutters or anything like that is going to be pitched, obviously, where it needs to go. Nothing's going to go in the pond.
When did you file with Concom?
It's been quite, it's been quite a while now. On this, this one here, I did not file on these two because they're 200 feet away.
Okay.
Sorry.
You're just, you're talking about the other development.
Correct.
Nothing to do with this board.
Right.
So you're going to be 200 feet away from those small ponds?
Yeah.
Or 200 feet away from the bigger pond that's called the reservoir?
Yeah, we're not close to the reservoir, but we are going to be 200 feet away from, lot one's going to be over 200 feet away, lot, I can see the line here, I just can't read it, but we're definitely going to be further away, and if there is any concern, I'd have, I would get Concom's approval.
Yeah, I mean, I can't remember the lot in my head on 31, but 33, the back line of the lot is right halfway through the pond.
So, sir, are you concerned, you're concerned for the ponds? Is that what your concern is or are you just curious?
Well, just a general understanding, you know, Mr. Maxey's had multiple ambitions for development of the golf course property, and this one seems pretty benign on its face, but, you know, knowing that he has broader ambitions, I'm just curious what, what's in the future, you know? And the ponds, it's hard for me to believe that the house will be at least 200 feet away from the existing small ponds. I can see it clearly, it's going to be more than 200 feet away from the bigger pond, the so-called reservoir.
So just for your edification and maybe once the question, I'm not saying I'm 100% right all the time, so I'm awful, somebody keep me honest here, but we're permitting him, if we would be permitting him to build a house there.
Right.
He would still have to go through pulling permit and giving plans and designs and whatnot, and in that case, if it was within any setback areas or too close, then the, he would still have to go before Concom and get their approval because the building commissioner would, would still go through the regular application process. If this, for example, were already his own residential and he didn't have to come to us and he went and pulled the permit, he would, if it was within a certain setback area, the plan showed that it was going to infringe where it shouldn't infringe, he would be required to go before Concom anyway. So the safeguard is still going to be there. He's just coming to us to see if this board will approve a special permit to allow him to change the use where it's not, not zoned to be used for residential.
Understood. Yeah. Just, a lot of my concern is just general concern.
I hear you.
Okay. Well-established neighborhood, and it's been a joy to live in that neighborhood for a long time, so.
Understood.
All right.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else have any questions or any follow-up?
Do you have any specific timelines, Mr. Maxey? Like when you expect to develop, are you going to develop it like simultaneously or?
No, I have no timeline. I just knew this was a procedure because as far as I was concerned, a lot of the neighbors would not want me to do business there, and, which is what's allowed, so in this case, I'm committed to doing the residential, which, which fits the neighborhood better. But I don't know when.
And all the neighbors were notified, so people were concerned we would have more than two people sitting in the audience, which is my guess. Any follow-up questions for any of the board members?
No.
Well, I don't have any questions. In these scenarios, I kind of refer to what I just stated, obviously, the neighbors are the ones who would be mostly impacted, and as Mr. Maxey said, most of this area is residential anyway, it's a golf course, so I don't see any major concerns, but that's just me. Anyone else? So we have a fork in the road, are we, the motion, or are we, I'll make a motion, we approve this special permit to construct a single family home in the existing room for 31 Reservoir. We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. So before I have Kathy Duiper's spiel, why don't I just take care of the Dupe pit right now?
And I can wave the spiel, I've heard. She's not feeling good tonight.
I'm not waving anything here. If anybody's coming back, we can tell them that they did something the right way. You don't have to get up and say the same speech again, don't worry about it, I'm not going to make you get back up there. Lakeville zoning board appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October 16th, Lakeville Library, Precinct Street, upon the petition of Derek Maxey for a special permit requested under section 270-4.1 and section 270-7.438 to allow the construction of single-family dwelling located in business zone. Property is 33 Reservoir Avenue. Application and documents were available at the planning department. So is this a duplicate application, sir, other than the address change?
Yes, it is. Yes, sir.
Do we have any additional questions in regards to this one? Nope?
No.
Anyone in the audience? He wants to get back up and talk again, I can tell.
I was wondering if they're going to be sliding range and stuff.
Well, you can talk to him about what he's going to put up afterwards. I make a motion. I'll make a motion, we grant him the special permit to put a single family home in the business zone, 33 Reservoir Avenue. We have a second.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
I regret that.
All right. Don't go too far there, Derek. This one's not. Okay. Lakeville zoning board appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, October 16th, 7:00 PM, Lakeville Public Library, Port Precinct Street, upon the petition of Derek Maxey, the special permit is requested under the section 270-6.3C1 and section 270-7.45C to allow the maximum aggregate of building size to exceed the allowed 1,000 square feet. The property is 55 Long Point Road. Documents and applications were available at the planning department. So before you jump in, let me just read the planning board memo from the planning board dated October 6th, 55 Long Point Road, Thursday, September 25th, meeting the planning board reviewed the above referenced petition. The hearing from the board appeals, the board has no comments regarding this petition, and I believe that is only, yes, the only memo I have to read into the record. So looks like you want to make something a little bigger than you're allowed to, so why don't you tell us what you want to do?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Derek Maxey, 55 Long Point Road in Lakeville. And if I may, I'd like to just hand out some, just a package so you can look at it real quick.
Assuming that's what you're looking to build?
Yes.
It's always helpful.
Yeah, there is a, also a photo here of the existing house that I live in now, which I'm trying to duplicate that. Hit with a grab.
I assume the first page of the new?
Yes, yeah. So I live in a barn, basically. It's the property down by Betty's Neck, the Deacon's property. It was one of their original workshops that they had back in the 30s and 40s, and then we converted it into a single-family, one red house. Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, if I can keep going?
Go right ahead, Derek.
Okay. So the situation here is kind of unique. Back in July of 2024, I had applied for a building permit to build this garage and did the, I did some work for it and some survey and stuff like that. And then recently, sometime this year, the bylaw changed to 1,000 squi, no more than 1,000 square feet. So the building commissioner thought the best thing to do would be to come in front of this board and explain what we're trying to do, the foundation's actually, actually already in, because I had started this, and this is the, I'll give you the building permit application.
That's all right.
So because I dragged my feet trying to get this done, it kind of put me in that little dilemma zone, and as far as the building commission, he thought this would be the best approach that way. Because even though I applied, I applied for the permit, I only had like the foundation part of it, part of the permit, he allows you to do that.
You have the foundation permit, you didn't have the regular permit, correct?
Right.
Yeah.
Right.
Which is uncommon for the, for the record, but it also means you weren't grandfathered in before we passed our bylaw.
Right.
So that's just a common, if you did submit it, right, particularly.
I only have a few of these. My creatures stopped. Let's chill out. Sorry, I didn't have some.
There. You have to take my whole packet. Maybe one, see this or? So this is on the corner of Long Point and then going into the primary block?
Yes, it is. And there, I have two neighbors, my nephew's one of them, and my daughter's the other one. And I'm surprised they're not here.
Those are the two houses on the left before that?
Correct, yeah. And other than that, it's conservation land behind me, bogs to the right. I'm, I'm not encroaching on any of the setbacks on one of the plans, I think it shows I'm quite a bit away from any of the sidelines or frontline.
Is the 1800 just the first floor or both floors?
Just the first floor. And I'm hoping to go back to the planning board and do an ADU on top. That's why they made comments on this already, because I've been, met with them already once.
How big would this ADU be?
It, most of it's going to be storage up top, but the ADU is going to be less than the 900 square feet.
That's going to say you, it has to be.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
900 from max.
So that's my dilemma.
That's your story, okay. Well, does anyone else have, does anyone have any comments or any questions at this point?
Just a clarification on this page?
Yes.
In the red, it says, is it Paul? Is it connected to the existing structure?
That was, that was one of the things the bill inspector said, if I, if I wanted to waive this part of it, then I'd have to connect it to the house. And my thought is, you know, it's a long way to do that just for that purpose. I'm hoping that I can get approved of this tonight and not have to do all that.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's a hook to the house and it's your. It's a hook to the house, then you're all set.
Right.
You don't need us.
Right. But I do need you.
But you're still going to have the same structure there.
Yes, correct.
And I think I'm, and on the record in the past, that I, I usually like to defer to the neighbors, I mean, they're the ones who are going to be most impacted by this. And now that we know it's your family and you probably told them not to come, but that's all right. No. I mean, there's no, the neighbors are not opposed to it. You're not approaching of any setbacks. I personally don't have a.
Put some gel in the back there.
Sure, if I don't, second. Okay. If we don't have any questions, I'm going to ask the audience. Okay. Anybody have any additional questions at this point?
No.
Anyone in the audience have a question? Okay, questions are good. Jeff, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Jerry, you good?
Did you already put water to this or you want to do it?
I have an underground pipe going to it, yes.
Okay. And then you're going to attach it to your septic already?
Yes. Yeah, I've already been, believe it or not, the plum inspector's already inspected this as well. So this is kind of like the last thing that came up and Nate just wanted to proceed with caution.
It's going to ADU anyways, correct?
Right, right.
So that may be.
It could be.
Yep, not ours right now. It's not ours, so. And this is just for your personal use, correct?
Yeah, yes. I, I have some classic cars that I want to kind of put in there and.
What kind of cars?
Classic cars, yeah.
Your own personal storage?
Right, yes.
You have no intention of operating a business?
No, no, I have about 10 cars now, so. Might not be big enough. I don't need any bigger.
1% problems.
Yeah. That's your problem, not ours.
I buy them in rough shape and then I do most of the work myself on them. It's kind of my, keeps my head kind of going straight.
Well, unless anyone else has any questions, anyone trying to?
I make a motion, we grant the special permit to conduct the garage on a 1800 square foot structure.
It might, it might be a little, it's 36 by 60, what does that come out to?
Is it 36 or 30?
36.
We, you make a motion to approve the special permit, it's applied for.
Okay.
That's our type.
Okay.
That'll be perfect.
We have it all on the record, and so it's about 1800 square feet. Do we have a second?
Second, 60.
It's 2160.
Okay. Glad to cut.
I'll second.
That's fine. 2160, as applied, we'll get a vote covered.
Yep.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank this board, the board for being here. I know it's a thankless job sometimes, and I also have to kudos to Kathy, she's, does a wonderful job in the office, so.
You got it approved, man.
It doesn't matter, she does. She's there, she.
I would second.
Kathy does an excellent job.
She does. Thank you, thank you very much.
You're welcome. You don't need to tell him, I think he knows.
He knows.
All right.
I didn't say that either.
Let's see, so we have minutes from September 18th.
Correct?
No, I didn't think so. I was just thinking, did I miss something? Because I didn't see those in the pack. So we'll be working on those next time around.
Yes.
Let's see, so a couple of housekeeping items. The first one is obviously LeBaron that we permitted a couple of meetings ago. The board voted to give me the authority to sign the permit when it was, the paperwork was complete, which I did. There was one additional piece that I did not want to sign without disclosing it to the board, the actual, what did we say it was? The actual phase and area plan that needs to be filed with the registry of deeds also needs to be signed. So rather than you guys voting to let me sign, we're all here, so we're all going to sign it. Does that sound?
I can't sign it.
As proposed, and yes, Jeffrey cannot sign, he's refusing himself from, from signing that, so I don't think we need to take a vote for this because we're all going to sign it. Again, it's not, you're not voting for or against, you're just signing the plan and it's approved. So we need three of us to sign it, we can do that when it falls to me. The other item that I'm going to bring up, we don't have other business, but just to point out, I did have Kathy send out, we just received it in the past week and a half, or I didn't receive it, but the town received it for the record that we received our housing production plan certification, certification of approval from the executive office of housing in livable communities. This is on record at the town. Basically, what it means is we have hit our 10%, so we are in a safe haven, compliance for two years as of February, which is when that we hit the 10%. We are just over at 11%. So what I do want to state for the record, especially because this is on the ATM, is anything that has been applied for permitting at this point, for example, Rocky Village, which is now Simmons Hill, that is not affected or impacted by this. That is already in the process, so that is not something that the town, we could say no to. Just because we're over the 10% doesn't mean that somebody can't apply or that a board cannot still approve that. What I do caution everyone is we are over the 10%, I don't know anything personally that's coming down the pipeline at this point, but this is, this is fluid. They do this periodically, and as new censuses come in, populations go up, that 10% number is actually going to change. So when you're just over it, historically, it normally comes back and you're under it again down the road. So I just want folks to realize that just because we're in safe harbor doesn't mean that we're good forever and a day type of a deal.
Would that number get reassessed before 2027? Or always be, you know, always after 2027 since we've been approved to 2027?
Would it get approved?
Like would our numbers for the 10%? Yeah, would our numbers, would the 10% number be reassessed prior to our safe harbor expiring?
There's a full, well, I shouldn't say full explanation, but it gets into a little of the details here, and rather than misstate anything, I'm going to be very cautious here. If Andy was here, I would turn it over to her to make sure I don't misspeak. Amy was here, I would turn it over to her to make sure I don't misspeak. But it's, again, I'm only pointing this out because town received it, a number of folks already know it in town. I think it, this board knows where we are, that we are in safe harbor, that we do not have to approve anything at this juncture, but it's temporary. And again, by the time this got approved, it was, it was February 27th. It was, I believe it was the hospital site which, which put us into it. So we are already almost a year into it. So we literally have, what, 16 or 17 months before we're out of it again. And again, don't look at the numbers at that point, but like I said, it's all dictated on a percentage of population.
The other two is the ones we approved that we could permit if they don't apply for a building permit in a certain period of time.
You are absolutely correct. Yes, that's a fair point. So as an example, Lakeville Hospital.
40B.
So if they don't pull a permit, I believe it's in here.
A year.
So if they don't pull a permit, all those come off. And not to ruin anyone's evening, but just because they haven't pulled the permit doesn't mean their permit, that doesn't mean their, their bigger permit for the project goes away. So if they could not pull the permit, we're out of safe harbor and now all of a sudden someone else comes in, wants to build another 40B, and then they decide six months later they're going to pull their permit, now we can have, you know, it's not like it stops them from doing that. We're going to have a larger number. So there's a lot of moving parts here, but we, everyone asks when we're going to get to our 10%. We are there, we're barely there, but I'm sure it will, it will change in the future. So.
So it's just for my clarification, the current inventory excludes anything that's proposed with Rocky Hill. The inventory does not incorporate that. And so today, as of today, we are considered in compliance with safe harbor inventory.
Yes.
For the inventory in town today.
Correct, but keep in mind, Simmons Hill has already been in the process, so it's not like we can go to the next Simmons Hill meeting and say, oh, you guys have to stop now.
No, but don't we have more flexibility as to how things progress with a development like Rocky Hill?
I don't believe so. Amy will be at those meetings and will guide us, but it's, it's, the state wants housing at the end of the day. So we're not going to have a lot of flexibility to say we want you to shrink down the size of it, we want you to, it's what.
Well, I think we should exercise our ability to manage a development if we're in compliance with other state requirements, particularly when it comes to 40B. This is going to be outside, if that permit now changes from a comprehensive permit in 40B to something different, we should be able to manage that development.
Well, it's still a 40B permit.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it's still, it's still protected under 40B.
Do they have the permit?
No.
The permit process, they have applied under 40B, so there are.
So you don't need the permit, you just need to be in the queue.
Exactly.
So we have to continue with this 40B process?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the state, state.
But that would only increase our numbers, right? That product if it goes through.
That number's figured in there.
I didn't see that one, must have.
No, it's not. That's what I was asking, is that inventory, is Rocky Hill included in that inventory? It's not.
No, I didn't think so, but.
It's not, I look.
Yeah, no, it isn't.
Okay.
Double checking. The last one here, because they do it, yeah, they do it in order. So the last one they have is Cranberry Heights, which is the hospital site. So it is, so Rocky Woods, when that does get permitted, that'll get added to it as well, and that'll be additional. Although there's 200 units at the hospital, so let's assume the hospital doesn't pull permit, those 200 units come out.
Yeah.
And even if Simmons Hill gets approved, like I said, we're just over 11%. It's not 200 units, I don't believe. Is it, how many units did you say? Was it down to 100 or something?
It's based on the 2020 census, so are you asking for 20?
Well, no, no, I'm saying the number of units that they're going to have up there because the number of units versus the 20, versus the census is how they come up with the numbers, so.
Can you say, it goes on. Can you explain?
So if.
I'm going to explain it one more time.
For the best you can. So my question is, if, if it's not calculated in the spreadsheet there, it has all the permitted 40Bs, how, how was Rocky Woods, if Rocky Woods is not in that, then does that mean it's not permitted?
Correct. It's not permitted yet.
So even though they're in the queue, if they're, if they're in the queue, why is it not like in that percentage?
Because there could be some reason why they, maybe there's a, there's a health danger, you know, and remember, they, it's very, very tough, but if there's a public health risk, they turn around and found out there's like arsenic in the water, you know, and there's no way to develop that because it's going to be so dangerous, that it's going to threaten lives, they're not going to include it until it's permitted. My guess is, the theory behind it is if you've put, if you've already put in and you've spent money and time and effort going through the process, just because you've hit a number, they're not going to stop that, they're not going to stop that entity from going in, right? And you could, you could have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars or whatever, and this number comes out and now all of a sudden, sorry, we're just going to say no because we want to say no. Again, remember that the state is driving housing. They're going to do anything they can to, to, to allow that to happen.
Yeah, but, but that's the purpose of our existence, is to control what we want to have to volunteer. And if we meet compliance, then we should be able to control what gets permitted.
Yeah, I just looked up the law, the safe harbor is not retroactive.
Say that again?
The safe harbor is not retroactive, just like you said, if they applied before we reached safe harbor, then they're in.
Yeah.
For potential approval.
The problem that you and most people are having, and I tend to agree with you in theory, is that someone else is dictating how we can regulate our community.
What I'm saying is that the handcuffs that are placed on us.
Yeah.
For 40B development.
Yeah.
It should be loosened because we are above compliance. So therefore, we can put more boundaries.
But they are loosened.
Around the permit.
They're, they're not loosened, it's dictated by the state.
But I guess maybe, are you alluding that maybe if we deny something, the state would be more inclined to not just favor inside of the developer in this case because we've already reached safe harbor?
You asking me or you?
I was asking Jerry, is that right? Cause I mean, ultimately, if we deny something and they appeal, normally what would happen is the state would side with the developer, right? We haven't reached safe harbor.
My understanding is that's still going to be the same scenario.
But I was wondering if that's what Jerry was saying, you thinking that?
I think we should be allowed to have more influence on what gets developed at a site like that if we are, if this town is in compliance with the state's.
Oh, no, I completely agree with that too. I just don't know if that's.
So instead of getting it pushed down that we're not, and therefore you must, it should be more that we will consider. So that's just my position. That's not my formal position.
No, I don't know, maybe I didn't express myself correctly. I agree, unfortunately, to your point about our handcuffs, it's almost like you've tied our hands, but now we're there, loosen it a little bit. No, we loosen it at all. We're going to, you guys still have to operate the same way you did because they've already applied for it.
Okay, then why have a threshold anyways?
Well, the next.
We'll have no compliance.
Well, say another one gets applied for next week, then.
Chris is right, if somebody wants to, just because you're hitting the threshold doesn't mean we still can't accept 40Bs. We could turn around and be at 11.2% and we have nothing in the queue, but we, you know, we're reading the team leaves and knowing, listen, we know that census is coming down the road and our population is going to jack up and we know we're going to be under the 11% and we have what they call a friendly 40B coming in. Do we work with that one or do we say no and then wait for someone to come in after the new numbers are who we don't want to work with and is basically going to thumb it nose at us and say, we're going to do whatever the heck we want to do because you can't stop us because the state's going to allow us to do it anyway, so.
I just feel like your position is that it doesn't matter. It does, we don't have any kind of say.
I don't think we have any say until we get to over 50.
That's what I'm saying.
15%.
Why not 20? Why not 30? I mean, why don't, why even have 10? What's the point of having a compliance threshold if we, they can just do another 40B development and we can't?
No, 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 it was my point. The compliance is 10%. My point is when you're only a little bit over, historically, it's always, it's going to come down because when the new census comes out.
Fine, when that, if that happens.
Right.
And if that, when it happens, right, then the board, this board would consider a different comprehensive permit, 40B. What I'm saying is, why can't we have more control over now Rocky Woods?
Because they've already applied for it.
And per se, I'm just making an example of Rocky Woods, because we're over that threshold.
I'd love to have more control, but we don't because they've already applied.
What's our, what's, what are the circumstances by which if we said it doesn't fit with the character of that area and therefore?
They're protecting the same 40B guidelines as.
What the implications if we say no?
Same implications as before. They'll turn around and say, we're going to go to the state and the state's going to approve what we've applied for. I mean, unless.
Despite the town is over, it's threshold.
Yes, I can guarantee you.
Which is why I'm asking why to have a threshold.
Well, because if another one gets applied for next week, then we have the power to say no.
Somebody applies next week and we don't like it, does a really terrible job and has, you know, whatever the reason, we can, we can say no now if somebody wants to apply next week.
Why can't we say no to Rocky Woods?
They've already applied.
Doesn't matter.
I think, I know, I'm not, I'm not here to dictate timelines or all that stuff.
Kathy, I haven't done this, I've never done this, but didn't my predecessor used to say, I'm going to give you some homework?
I, I know, I looked it up. I'll give you homework.
I looked it up, I was disappointed too because I was.
I was very happy when I saw this email today and I think this is fantastic.
I know.
This board won't have to do comprehensive permits for two years.
If you come back and find a loophole in the law that says we can say no to Rocky Woods, I will support it 1000%.
I think we're always within our right to say no. That's my, we take the risk of saying no, particularly if we're under compliance. But I think if we're over compliance, we provide conditions, reasons of why we deny a permit.
We can solve this very easily.
And I'll do my homework to get you.
You don't even need to do your homework. We're going to ask Amy, and she'll tell us whose interpretation is correct. Anything else to come up or do we want to adjourn the meeting?
It's a good debate.
Yeah, I like it. Very interesting.
I think we all agreed, honestly. I don't even think it was much of a debate.
We'll find out for me.
Honestly, I.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I second.
I second.
All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Here, adjourned at 7:40. 7:30. 7:43. We are recorded now.